Good afternoon, everybody. Apologies for the delay. We're still having fun. Computer technology issues in the council chambers. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember May?
Here.
I can't hear you but here.
Councilmember Hattar?
Present.
Councilmember here?
Here.
Councilmember Mumm?
Here.
Councilmember Stratton?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. I'd like to turn it over to City Attorney Michael Ormsby to take us through the advanced council agenda for November 16th. We can't hear you, Mike. Uh, let's see. I'm not...
There we go. Sorry.
Yep.
So, it's a relatively short agenda at this point. On the consent agenda for next week, we start with the reports of the mayor on pending claims and payments as well as payroll claims. And there are placeholder blanks there that will be filled in prior to next week's meeting. And secondly, we have a placeholder for city council meeting minutes that will also be prepared and placed on the agenda prior to next week. The legislative session under board and commission appointments, the CTAB has one reappointment for the council to act on. And finally, we go to the legislative agenda, and there are a number of first reading ordinances. And these ordinances relate, I believe, to proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. And Kevin Freebot is here to brief on these items. And I notice also, there's a number of other staff members from our planning department that are also on the call. So, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. One moment here, and I'll get my screen up. I have an extremely short presentation. I know you have a very full agenda, and I don't want to take too much time.
Kevin, if you could speak up a little bit or into your microphone.
Yes, sir. I'll try. I thought I had it all the way out, but is this better?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. I will shout, and the neighbors will hear. So, very quickly, we'll just go through, just as a reminder, we did have our study session with you folks on October 29th where we went over all of these in detail. Again, all of the materials for the comprehensive plan amendments are available on the city's project site. And of course, the comp plan itself is at shapingspokane.org. We have nine applications that we are bringing forward, nine separate ordinances for your consideration. There are six land use map changes, land use map plan changes, that have been brought forth by private individuals. You can see them on the map here in general by these little red pins. And so, there's six of those. And then, we also have some amendments to the bike master plan, namely, some text amendments, just changing terminology. We do have a number of amendments to map TR-5 as well, which is the bike facilities plan, or the future bike facilities. And you should have all of those in your packets as well. We have a minor text amendment to Chapter 4 for railroad crossing safety, and then some minor amendments to the arterial network map, which is map TR-12 in the comprehensive plan. And so, those are the nine ordinances that we hope to bring to you on the 26th. Just a quick additional note, I have just recently sent you a late comment letter that we received from Spokane Police regarding one of the proposed map changes for the proposed bike network map, specifically as it relates to Boone Avenue. So, that should be in your email, and I sent it to the LAs as well. That's it for me, unless you have questions.
Councilmember Mumm? You're on mute.
Thanks for sending along that comment, recognizing that Sportsplex facility is also supposed to, isn't it having a cycle track in it as well? I mean, we've got a lot of bicycle connectivity needs to happen there. So, did the Bicycle Advisory Board weigh in on that amendment at all?
I believe so, but I can double check and get back to you.
It would be great if we could get a response to what that one officer's concern was on Howard and such.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Kevin, this is Councilmember Cathcart. An email I had sent you asking if the reason for that response is because the plan is to road diet Boone. And I'm just wondering if anybody on knows any more about the proposed project, and if that is in fact a road diet? Or are we going to expand the bike lane into right-of-way, using right-of-way?
Yeah. And Councilmember, I had gotten back to you. Unfortunately, it was right before this, so I imagine you haven't seen it. You know, typically, these map amendments are not at the design level. They aren't down to the street lane level. It hasn't been determined yet whether to do that kind of a change would require additional right-of-way, or it would be done within the existing right-of-way. There's some discussion of those impacts in the packet you'll see, but this is, you know, this is like step one of the long process of project development. And so, the exact design hasn't been worked out, and that's, the police comments are well noted and understandable, but really, comp plan amendments don't typically go to that level of detail.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. I was just going to mention, this project was approved last year by council and supported by the PFD as part of the Sportsplex was the whole piece. It was hand and glove in the Sportsplex and connecting Gonzaga and Logan neighborhood to this area, and then on to northwest Spokane, so.
And just one other request, if I may. Kevin, do we have anything from the Bicycle Advisory Board on this? Did we, is that part of our packet, or do they make a recommendation here?
I don't believe they submitted a comment letter, but I will double check and let council know.
Because I really feel like if they didn't going forward, any amendments to the bicycle plan, I really would even like to have a study session with them about. We need to hear from them. They are advisory board on this.
So, Colin Quinnhurst did present the changes to the Bicycle Advisory Board. I just don't know the specifics right off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Anything else on the first reading for comp plan amendments? All right.
And not seeing anything further, I would then move to the final ordinance, and that relates to the transportation and, oh, no, excuse me. The, finally, I would just note that for the public hearing for next week, will be a continuation of the hearing on the 2020 proposed budget. I don't see Paul on the call, but I think this is just a continuation of a hearing that was noted earlier this month.
Okay.
And that is all of the advanced agenda for next week.
I'm just wondering, since we have no consent, and we only have First Amendment, or First Readings, and a hearing that we could do that is just going to continue to the week afterwards, if anyone wants to move the appointments and the first reading of ordinances to the 3:30 session, and make sure that when we continue the hearing, we don't continue it to the 16th, but we do it to the 23rd, so.
I will, did 6:00 PM session be condensed with the 3:30 session for that reason?
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right. With that said, is there a motion to approve the advanced council agenda to be heard at the 3:30 session?
To move second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? All right. We'll do that at 3:30. And that brings us to this evening's agenda. Councilmember Burke notified me she'd like to take matter number five. Are you wanting to take that separately or at the legislative session?
Separately is fine.
Okay. And, let me see what else. All right. There is a request for Resolution 2020-0084 to substitute a new version of that. I'm not sure if that's been distributed to council. If anyone...
It's in the packet.
Oh, it's in the packet? So, we need to, I need a motion formally to substitute the motion that appears in the packet, or the resolution that appears in the packet for the previously filed one. Looking for a motion.
To move second.
Okay. It's moved to seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. Let's see. Councilmember Kinnear, you had asked me about ordinances C-35962, C-35963, which are stormwater rates in 62, and then 63 is all utility rates in the PDA. You'd asked me about deferring that until the 30th to discuss at PIES. So, I don't know if you have a motion to that effect.
Yes. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to defer those until November 31st. Is that correct?
30th.
30th. Okay. Yes. I would like to make a motion to defer till November 30th.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those...
Council President, just for clarity, which one are we deferring?
Yep. It's 962, which is the new stormwater and wastewater rates for three years. And then, 963, which is all the rates at the, in the public development authorities, because they include those water, or those sewer and stormwater rates.
So, we would still take 64 and 65?
Correct. And, yeah, everything else, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Okay. Abstentions? All right. Those are there. And then, the other question, we had deferred for the last couple of weeks, the purchase of the police vehicles. We got the analysis today of whether what's cheaper, electric or non-electric. We got that today, a really good report from Nathan. And it looks like the electric is substantially less expensive, but there's some questions from Fleet about whether or not those vehicles would meet police purposes. There's several jurisdictions that use them, the same ones, but, so, I don't know. It seems like there's more work to do, and we also heard that they already purchased the vehicles for the grant, so it doesn't sound like the grant deadline is there. But again, Councilmember Kinnear?
Councilmember, I mean, Council President, can we confirm that the grant money was spent? Because we're getting conflicting information from police and from finance.
All right. Well, we can, Tonya Wallace was going to be at this meeting to answer those questions, but she will be at 6 o'clock, so we can hear from her then.
Council President?
Yeah.
Council President, it is Justin Lundgren. I'd like to clarify that. What occurred, there's a significant backlog on ordering and receiving vehicles. So, we had two different grants. We had the JEG grants, and we had the Behavioral Health Unit grant through the WASPIC Association that provided funding for vehicles. We had orders that we had placed literally over a year prior that we had just taken delivery on. So, we applied the grant payment to that order to ensure that we got it before the end of the year, so that we can have the vehicles in hand and properly spend grant money as we agreed. So, we are now using capital funds to essentially repurchase the vehicles that we had in the original order.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Okay. So, we're, so that we still need to reimburse the department for them advancing the vehicles to the grant, but we're not at any danger of losing the grant money at this point? At this point?
Yes, we would. We would be in danger because...
How's that?
We had already budgeted to purchase the number of vehicles that came in on that purchase. So, if we do not purchase the four additional vehicles, we would essentially be supplanting and would have to...
Oh. All right. All right. That's different information than I got earlier today, or at least how I understood it, probably was presented correctly. What's the deadlines for not supplanting, for ordering and not supplanting?
I'm told it's the end of the year.
Okay. All right. All right. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Kinnear?
I suppose. I'm more confused than ever that, I guess, police and finance are talking past each other, but I think we'll figure it out at some point.
Okay. All right. So, did you still want to make a motion to defer that until, I'm not sure when your next public safety meeting is?
Our next public safety meeting is the first Monday in December, but I think we need to get answers before. We have until the end of the year. We need to get these things answered.
Okay.
And certainly clear up some of the issues around electric versus hybrid versus conventional vehicles, because I still feel like we're not in a place where we can make a good decision.
All right. How, we could put it on the November 30th PIES agenda. Fleet used to be in that world. It's not anymore, but it's kind of similar.
Okay. Let's do that.
All right. So, is that your motion, then, to defer to the November 30th?
Oh, sorry. Yes. A motion to defer until after PIES.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So, the motion, oh. Oh, sorry. PIES is the 23rd. I am so sorry. So, motion to defer till the 23rd following, either legislative agenda following the PIES meeting. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right. That's deferred to the 23rd. And hopefully, we can get some more information. We did get some late-breaking information from Nathan this afternoon. It's helpful, but we still probably need to have a chat with what the specifications are for the vehicles and how they differ from the K8s. Okay. Just a note for everybody, I'll just say it once now, and then is the Utilities has requested that we move the order of discussion and move the resolutions 84 and 85 that have to do with Water Department and Sewer. We're going to move that to right before C-35961 under, how do you say that? I'm not sure if it's, might be C-35964. So, sorry. I'll get that figured out. It is 61. Okay. Right before 61. Any other questions, agenda issues? Hearing none. Let's have the consent agenda read.
Reports, contracts, and claims.
Filled separately, please.
Yeah. We did, we did that. Or, I mentioned that. Yeah. Yeah.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, consultant agreement amendment extension with Journal Technologies Incorporated for Legal Case Management Software License, Maintenance, and Support for Spokane Municipal Court, as well as prosecutor's probation in the public defender's office from November 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022, not to exceed $85,000. Number two, contract extension with Infinite Innovations to support the completion of the E-Suite Legal Case Management Solution from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, $117,000. Number three, approved budgeted Performance Management Office 2021 contractual service funds to be used to extend funding of existing Volt contract for critical path resources, $240,000. Number four, consulting contract with Osborn Consulting Engineers to perform the stormwater study, $187,565. Item number five will be taken separately. Item number six, memorandum of understanding between Downtown Library and Public Works to transfer budget to the library to finish the landscaping surrounding the building and complete the paving of the south half of Lincoln Street adjacent to the Downtown Library Building, $40674. Number seven, grant award acceptance from Kaiser Permanente to prevent and respond to the spread of COVID-19 among the homeless population and to sub-grant these funds to homeless service providers, $150,000, relates to special budget ordinance, C-35968, which will be considered during the 6:00 PM legislative session. Number eight, report of the mayor of pending aid claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through October 30, 2020, total $7,57,269.56 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $4,388,584.15. B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through October 31, 2020, $7,565,991.87. Number nine, city council meeting minutes for October 26, October 29, and November 5, 2020.
All those in favor of adopting the consent agendas read, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right. The consent agenda is read, is approved. Now, we'll take matter 5A, B, and C separately. Go ahead and read.
Number five, multiple family housing property tax exemption agreements with A, Quigley Two LLC for up to seven new multifamily housing units located at 6030 North Ruby Street, parcel number 36322.1018. B, Xavier Property One LLC for four new multifamily housing units located at 1916 North Wall Street, parcel number 35074.43306. And C, Boliman LLC for up to 12 new multifamily housing units located at 812 East 5th Avenue, parcel number 35201.5317.
All right. Any commentary on that item?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Council. Go ahead, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I just feel like this is starting to get a little bit ridiculous. I feel like we keep giving dollars to, that could be going in the general fund and with a cut to our budget coming because of COVID. I think it's our responsibility to relook at the multifamily tax exemption, restructure it, and actually give these exemptions to people who are going to actually put affordable housing in place rather than condos that are selling for millions. It's a loss to our general budget. It's not fiscally responsible, and we have a lot of work to do in the affordable housing realm. So I just feel like we really need to relook at our multifamily tax exemption. We're in a different time than we were when we passed in 2015. And housing is the only thing that is not going down in this economy. So I feel like this is our responsibility as a council, and I am in full support of making these amendments and changes to our multifamily tax exemption.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Any comments from other council members?
Yes. Council President Barry Kinnear, I don't disagree with Councilmember Burke. I think we do need to relook at MFTEs. However, there's an expectation, until we do make those changes, that the developer will get them. So I have issues as well, but I think based on what we have right now, we need to honor that.
Councilmember Mumm?
Sure. You know, that might be something that we want to look at in terms of a cap on valuations. I don't know if we have any information. I haven't heard that any of these appear million-dollar condos. Do we have any information on that?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that maybe, I don't know if Ally's here, but I'm pretty sure these ones are not that, but.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that. But that might be something that the council could consider, you know, in terms of what potential value of the property is, if that's something that's important to us. When we did the MFTE consideration, we were pretty careful in the areas that we chose. But you're right, we didn't say over a certain or under a certain amount of valuation. So that could be something we look at.
I'd love to get a study session with Terry Stripes and City Legal to explain to us what we can do and can't do within the current legislation. Because I share Councilmember Burke's concern about when do we use this incentive or not? And my, again, for me, it's, there's a upward limit somewhere, I think. It's probably lower than a million dollars where it doesn't apply or it's phased in. But I'm just not clear whether it's an all or nothing. Because right now, it seems the way it is, it's all or nothing. So I think we can schedule that as part of our housing work that we're doing. And maybe even, maybe we might even be able to get someone to address it at our housing forum coming up in a couple of weeks. So, any other comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of matter 5A, B, and C indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right. We don't have an executive session this evening, so we'll be back at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned until then.